Thank you.
I'll sum it up the rest. Good evening, everybody. Let's turn off our phones and we will stand and have prayer and play for you. Our Father, this is the day that you have made. We rejoice here. We are glad in it. We thank you for it. And so we we thank you again for the safety of of our town and the way that you put your hand around that train to protect our people. And for those who are recovering emotionally, we pray that you will will give them again, a sense of of calm and comfort and that they will give all of their anxieties to you and and trust in you for their safety. Thank you for the safety of our of our officers in the same type of situation. Pray for those who are in poor health right now. There are some that are are struggling. Pray that you will be with them and just give them a restoration. As we handle the business of the town, pray that you'll give us humility and respect for one another. And may we do our our jobs well and with respect for all of our people in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there any public comment tonight? Here you go. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. All right. We have some smiling faces with us tonight. Most of you are smiling. And we are going to recognize you all tonight with the Library of the Week for 2025. And so I will read it and then I'll let you come up, come forward and to receive it. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas libraries collaborate with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. Whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. Whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Now therefore being resolved that I, Mayor Eric Doyle, proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2025, as Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. All right. Are you all coming forward?
I'll talk for some.
All right. Cause Patty, you come come here and then the other three of you will surround us. All right. Appreciate it. It's been all good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page.
He said it all for me.
You can read it tomorrow.
All right. Phillip, I believe I'm going to ask the time to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We per the last time we met for the the council workshop, the annual planning workshop, it was discussed that we would be modifying our fee schedule. In particular, we would be modifying the building department fee schedule first. And there was discussion about having a workshop on that item, considering that we only had one potential item on this agenda. What I have in front of you is a draft version of that for us to 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 talk about and kind of go through. And I'll give a little bit of background on the impetus for this. The state passed House Bill 461 regarding the method by which permit fees can be charged, changing from the allowance of a valuation method, which is what we previously were basing our permit fees on, most of them, to a strictly square footage method. As a result, the town has been working with SafeBill to establish new square footage basis bases for evaluating the permits. Staff has taken this as an opportunity to also evaluate the fees as a whole to determine if our overall charges are still relevant. Some of the findings and current activity, we found that comparatively Tyrone charges considerably less than some of the surrounding communities. And we're proposing an approximate 25, it's a little bit closer to 15 to 25% increase in the overall building permit fees as well as how we've changed the valuation method. That places us at the average of surrounding communities in Fayette County, Cowee County, things like that. In addition, we're also recommending slight increases to non-building permit fees as well, and I'll go over some of those. So staff does recommend discussion of, you know, what I'm going to go over. And if you're comfortable with this draft schedule, you may make a motion, approve the draft schedule for future adoption. I will be bringing that adoption to you along with a revised contract with SafeBill. So those have to go hand in hand because currently SafeBill retains 100% of certain fees that we have in lieu of their services. And so we're proposing a revision of that. If we increase our fees and we make some modifications to our fees, we'd like to have that revised contract reflect that we retain 25% of those fees. So they get a 75-25 split. Our prior contract with SafeBill, a couple of years ago, prior to us receiving permit tech services from them, was a 60-40 split. But they now do all of our permit tech work, which is a considerable amount of work. And so that's just a ratio change of what they get from our permit fees is why we're at 100% right now. So before I get into anything, any questions kind of about that in the background information?
So SafeBill, that is the salary that they're receiving is the, that 75, that 100%?
Yeah, so there's
Not getting paid on top of that?
We, they are currently because of our code enforcement services, which we discussed. So that's, that's an additional service that we pay out. But the way that we get paid for, or that SafeBill gets paid currently, is that for certain fees, they get 100% of those permit fees. And I'll, and I'll outline which ones those are and how that kind of works. And in lieu of that, they provide us with all the permit tech services. Um, okay. So we've got, I've got a couple of different things in front of you. It's, it's actually pretty complicated and complex. State law did not make this easy for us in terms of changing how we value permits. But I have here the, the building fees. I have a breakdown of how we got there. I have some additional permit fees that are kind of part of our schedule that are not building fees specific. And then I have, just because I'm in the midst of it, our, our planning, zoning, and environmental fees in here. So this also includes some, some engineering fees as well. But I'll start here. So certain fees for SafeBill, they retain 100% of, that won't change. That's inspection, reinspection fees, like re-review fees for plans, if somebody changes plans, things like that, that they, that's their cost they're incurring. That's a fee that we, that that gets charged to them. And those will always remain 100% SafeBill fees, but they're usually minor, small fees. The main building fee is broken up into three kind of different sections here. The base building fee is the building fee. So this would be for a new residential, a new commercial, a commercial addition, a residential addition, accessory structure. So this is the base fee for that, for that type of work. And, and that fee currently is 100% going to SafeBill. The way that that was valued was that it was a particular percentage, roughly speaking, of the value of the work. So the value of that building that was being built. We now have to go off of a square footage method. So in international building code, there are different types of buildings, which I have listed here. We don't have to go through all of them. But assembly, business, education, factory, moderate hazard, low hazard, high hazard, institutional, residential of different types, right? So there's different types of building classifications. And then there are different construction types within each classification. So 1A, 2B, 2A, 2, I'm sorry, 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 4, 5A, and 5B. This is how that particular building type is constructed. So you kind of see some of the description there. It's whether it's a wood frame with certain types of, it's really about fire protection, wood frame, fire protected, not protected. Is it, you know, steel constructed building, all these different things. So SafeBill has gone through and created, and and staff, me in conjunction with them, we went through and we created a square footage valuation for each building type or classification and each construction type within each classification. So this is a valuation. What ends up happening now is because it needs to be based on square footage, you take that square footage amount and you multiply, or you take that valuation and you multiply it now by the square footage of the building. So if this building that was being built was an A2 assembly structure that served food and drink, you would say, how is it constructed? Well, it's a 5B wood frame unprotected building. Take that valuation based on square footage. So the square footage is over here. So let's just say it's a, this is 10,000 to 100,000 square feet. So it's a 50,000 square foot building. You take this number, multiply that by the square footage of the building, and that's the base fee that you would get. I'm going to stop right there. Does that make sense? Okay. So that's where we've come from, come from with that. So we, what we're proposing is that we, we have these fees established. We would get 25% of that number. Then there is SafeBill's fee that gets included in that. That's their plan review fee. So that's them having a planner, your building officials, inspectors, everybody like that, go through and, you know, review these plans. And based on complexity, because each one of these building classifications and types have varying levels of complexity that are involved with them, which is why different numbers are associated in that chart. That's their plan review fee. Usually the plan review fee is 100% a SafeBill fee. And we're not, we're not, we're not proposing a change there. So they would get 100% of that plan review fee as, as they always have. The Tyrone administrative fee is usually 5%, and that number is 50% of the base building fee. The Tyrone administrative fee, so this is our very, very direct, you know, kind of costs associated with that permit. That is, that's 5% of the base fee. And that's how those will be calculated. That fee, the administrative fee, is 100% our fee. And it remains so today and it will be. So that's how that, that's how that is, is structured. So we have in here each one of the building types, the valuations for how they're constructed, and that's where we've come, come from there. We also, in light of a lot of these, in light of data centers and some of these really complicated projects, we're going to create a system for what we call complex and long duration projects. Complex and long duration projects are defined here. So complex is defined as a project that includes one or more of the following. Unique and specialized equipment, building systems, multi-faceted programs, accelerated scheduling, intricate phasing, things like that. Because we've now encountered with these data centers and in a very, very intensive amount of work that goes into the permitting and building process associated with them. And it's not specifically for data centers, but it's for very, very highly specialized facilities or long duration or and or long duration projects that have a construction horizon of over 12 months. So the building fee, the base fee, would go up by, in this case, a quarter of a percent for a complex project and a tenth of a percent for long duration projects for every month or fraction thereof over 12. And that's just so that in particular, some conversations with SafeBill that they can make sure that they are covering some of their costs in, in having, you know, personnel available for some of these long-term projects. As an example, with QTS, they had to hire a lot of people because they've essentially got at the QTS campus, you know, permanent, you know, employees that'll be there for years that just, just do and inspect QTS facilities. So that's just kind of some of the basis as to why we have this in here. I'm also, yes, sir?
I was just going to thank you. So the quarter of a percent is just a one-time fee, but the, the calculation for the long duration is one, is the tenth of a percent every month beyond 12 months?
Yeah, that would go on the front end. So let's just say it was, this, this project was going to be 10 months. It would be an extra percent. So you add, you'd add a tenth of a percent for every month over 12. So if it was going to take 22 months, that's an extra 10 months, it would be an extra percent onto the, the base building fee.
But the quarter of percent, that's just the one-time fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That would be. And yeah, so in, in these complex and long duration projects, something I would like to see reflected in this contract when it gets to you is that we are able to negotiate that percentage instead of 25% to see if there is a more negotiable percentage from SafeBill that's more appropriate for these buildings because as we've kind of experienced with some of these super, super high-value, complex, long-duration projects, the building permit fees are in the millions of dollars. I mean, these are incredibly high-value buildings that just yield that kind of permit fee. And we want to make sure that we are justly, you know, capturing the fee for our residents, you know, that's coming back to the town. So we want to make sure that we're adjusting that because they're very high-value buildings. So that's kind of the direction that we'd like to go with the contract with SafeBill and why we have this in there.
Do you think that race in doing this, or whatever the percentage you decide to do, is that going to deter anybody from building in our town?
Um, you know, there's always, it's always a thought process. At the end of the day, this base building fee is not necessarily going up a tremendous amount. I've, I've, I've got this breakdown here of where our old rates were. So of course, we did not have a valuation or a, we did not have a square footage-based valuation system before. So what we had to do was look at the valuation system and convert that as equally as possible to a square footage valuation method. That's what we have over here on the far left. It's the old rate table, the proposed rate table, and then I have here for every single type, the percentage difference. On the far right, I have the average. So I just took the average of all these numbers, the average increase for this type of building.
14.38.
Yeah. We were actually, so it's about, it's really about, yeah, that's 14.38% for that, for assemblies-type buildings. For general business buildings, it's about 10 and a half percent increase depending on the construction type, right? Like, some of these, we're, we're increasing it 15%. So if you built your building in this way, at that level of, you know, complexity, it would be 15% higher. But if you built your building, you know, if you built your building here, actually, 2B construction, we're actually not changing that fee at all. Because we were competitively priced in that area in terms of fees.
Phillip, I'm not so much worried about what the increase is. I would be more, put more scrutiny on how it compares to the market. And if the whole point of what you tried to do here was to get it to market level than that?
Yes. That's precisely what we're doing. We're not any higher than our peers is really what we're, what we're talking about. The one area that we did not really increase very heavily, if at all, if I could scroll down to residential, R is R3, which is your typical single-family. We, we were, we were relatively on par with our surrounding communities. This is also where residents feel the hit the hardest is typically in this arena of, you know, single-family residential. These are the average people in town that are going to pull like a, you know, a deck permit, or they're going to pull a, an addition permit. And so we're really not proposing an increase there. But, but on pretty much all the other areas that you will see an average increase there. Another thing that we're doing, this is kind of, kind of breaks out the complexity a little bit. For electrical, plumbing, and HVAC fees, these are our trade fees. Most communities, we, right now, we just have a flat fee. It's 50 bucks. It doesn't matter what you're doing, HVAC, plumbing, electrical related, it's a $50 fee. We also have it rolled into our new build fee. So if whatever your new building is, you don't have to go pull separate, necessarily separate fees or permits for that. And you don't get charged extra fees currently. But most communities don't do that. And that's something that we recognized in kind of looking at Fayetteville, Sonoya, Cowee County, Noonan, you know, Union City, a lot of other places. What they end up doing is they do have a base fee for trades. Ours was $50. We're recommending that the new minimum be $75. And if there's any additional elements that have to be, these are usually elements that the inspector has to look at, that the planner reviewer has to look at to, you know, kind of get, make sure that everything is to code. Any of these additional elements are going to then be extra charges. So where you start at is zero. And if you, let's just say you're residential, you're doing residential electrical and you are doing a 200 amp service and you're doing, you know, a couple of other things and you add that up and it's $75, that's what you pay. If it's less than $75, you'll pay 75. And if it's over 75, you'll pay whatever the increment of those values are over 75. Same thing for plumbing and HVAC, which is actually a lot simpler because those are just a lot, a lot more simple, flat fees. So what's going to happen here is for new builds, it's not going to be rolled into the new building fee or process. I told SafeBill I don't want people pulling separate permits. I think that's a little e-extra, but they will get charged this fee now in addition. I asked also, I pulled data from Fayetteville. This is, this is almost identical to Fayetteville's charges that they do in the city of Fayetteville. I asked for a specific residential because our citizens actually like the fact, if they just need to pull a permit, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a simple, flat, you know, $50 fee. They can just go with, they need to replace their hot water heater or whatever. It's a very quick process. I asked for residential specifically, what's the average fee? And Paul Hardy told me that about 85, 90% of the time, it's just, it's just the base minimum fee of $75. And I believe Fayetteville, it's $100. So in this circumstance, I'm not, not recommending that we go to $100, but I am recommending that we go up to 75. And for the average residential work, it's not going to be any more than that. If they're doing something very, very complicated, or they're doing a huge project, a huge house, then you're going to start to see those uptick. But that's, that's what that's going to look like. I kind of, I kind of gave some, some examples over here. And again, SafeBill's getting 100% of that fee. We would propose that we would get 25% of that fee.
Phillip, just a quick question. All of this work, especially, let's go with the plumbing, because that's basically, does that, does that require a inspection by SafeBill?
Yes. Yeah. And so of course, the more complex the work you're doing, the more you have to inspect. And so it's really one of those things where a flat fee is, you know, some people are subsidizing others, you know, just because some, some jobs are more complicated than others. But for, especially for electrical work, you know, the inspectors get into a great amount of detail and they're, they're going in a lot of places, making sure that electrical's correct. Same thing with plumbing and HVAC.
How does, how many of your fee schedules become flexible enough to expand with changing technology and adding new things that inspectors have to look at?
So I, I do currently have a, at the end, at the, at the end of each one of these sections, you can see here miscellaneous fixtures not listed, miscellaneous fixtures not listed. Right now, they would just, miscellaneous units not listed under mechanical. Right now, they would just fall right there. But if we were start, if we started to see something that became more and more complex, another part of this big plan that we're, we're doing is to have a consolidated schedule of fees. So if we need to add something, this spreadsheet becomes much more, you know, comprehensive. And we just bring the fee schedule to you to revise and say, this is some, this is a new fee, or this is a new thing that we're, we're encountering. We'd like to revise this fee schedule and bring it to you to add those things. But right now, the way it's incorporated is just at the bottom there, the miscellaneous section.
So if you wanted to add a line item in that?
Yeah.
Why didn't they bring to us, put that in there?
Well, it is, it is a charge and that we're, that we're, you know, we're charging to other people. And, and sometimes these charges go to residents, you know, as direct charges. So I mean, the same, same as us bringing, you know, super rates or anything like that to you. We do want to make sure that we, we we get your approval before we, we modify those types of fees. Even if they're small ones, but that's just kind of, I don't foresee a, a lot of revisions. Once we do this comprehensive update, I mean, we haven't revised our fees really in years. So I, I think once we do a comprehensive update, we shouldn't be bringing things to you all the time.
You know, I know that a lot of times, because in the international code, that kind of determines when a technology has to be used in, in, in construction. For example, the electrical code changed a couple of years ago. And for new construction, the electricians have to put like a whole home surge protector on all of their panels now. Like, it doesn't apply to existing buildings, but that's a new piece of technology that now inspectors have to look for when they go in and they're reviewing the electrical. So I'm just, you know, you might be opening up a can of a whole lot of work to try to keep up. I know you have a partner in Paul and he stays on top of it. He goes to go by the back of his hand. But that is something that's going to be driven to, we got to do this now. We got to do this now. And now we have to price that. So just to, just to be aware that every time something comes up, I'd be adding to this.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I, I don't know how often, I'm not able to speak to, you probably have more familiarity with it than me, how often those types of things come across and how often we would be adjusting the fee schedule, if indeed it's something that, you know, warrants not going in the miscellaneous section. So, yeah, I would, I would kind of, I'll, I'll be sure to pay attention to that, see kind of how things evolve. Unless, unless you prefer we not go in this particular direction.
Got it. Stop.
Okay.
How do we monitor, how do we monitor all the commercial businesses, the, the Reese's, the Action Plumings, and, you know, any other that they're, every time they go into somebody's house and replacing a hot water heater or doing work in there, that they're actually pulling permits?
That's a great, that's a great question. We, we do rely on people being, you know, reporting the work that they're doing. So if we, if we see somebody, if we have reason to believe that somebody's doing unpermitted work, then that is a code violation. We would, in theory, send a code enforcement officer to say, you know, you're in violation of the code. Or we'd send a building official to say, you're in violation of the code. You had certain work done. You need to pull a permit. And at that point, it would be a double permit fee as the penalty. But yeah, we, we do, we do rely on people to do the right thing and permit their work. And
What if you did your own work?
So the fees will still apply. State law does allow you as a primary homeowner on your primary home to do, you know, building and trade work yourself. But you're also But you're also signing a homeowner affidavit that states that you know the code and that you're gonna do this to code. Um, so state law does give a provision for that, but you would still you would still need to pull a permit and you would s- instead of me getting a contractor uh state license and all the licensing, you would instead send me a homeowner affidavit. You would sign on the dotted line that you're doing X, Y, and Z work. You understand, you know, the risks involved in that and you understand the code. Um, and that you're not gonna use our building officials as consultants and you you would go forth with doing that work, paying the fee. So um, that's what I have there. The only the only additional fee, I do have our sewer fees here. Um, I I just have our existing sewer fees. Um, we've been doing some work trying to determine if our sewer fees are relevant compared to other jurisdictions. So far, they appear to be. Um, I know Scott wants uh to do a little bit more work with Curtis to make sure we're at the right place, but as it stands now, we're just keeping our sewer fees the way they are. Um, and then we are also in some of some of these miscellaneous p- fees for uh pools, demolitions. Uh, we are proposing an increase here for residential pool, a fifty dollar increase, uh demolition permit, a hundred dollar increase and a um if for and then we're separating also residential from non-residential in that category. And then some inspection, re-review and expiration fees. We did not have a very good layout of the penalty kind of fees associated with letting your permit expire or what have you. So um for re-inspections, these will go essentially directly to Safeville for re-inspection fees. So but we are gonna establish, um, because sometimes people use and they abuse the inspection process, uh fifty, seventy five, hundred dollar escalation on the same item. So it's not if you have a re-inspection that's required um on two different items, you it starts to escalate. It's on the same violation. Um, and then plan review fees as well. If you um, if you have to get, we're, you know, i- if you've been told you need to revise X, Y, and Z, it comes back, you didn't revise it, it requires another plan review, then you're gonna incur a little bit of a penalty fee for that. So um, that's what we're proposing there. And then the last section here are our planning, zoning and environmental fees. Um, w- I it, we were actually pretty on par with our surrounding jurisdictions in the metro area on these fees. So a a couple of these have been increased. None of them have been decreased. Um, a couple of them have been increased. Um, and um it just outlines which fees we have here. So stormwater management, plan review fees, final plat, preliminary plat, site plans, tree protection, um, things like that. And then rezonings, variances, text amendments. Um, we've got those fees here.
Since since we're doing most of that work, right?
We get a hundred percent of all planning and environmental fees. So all of these fees come to us a hundred percent. And that's that's the way it works now, and that's how the future ones will work. So I know it's a lot of information and it's a big breakdown. This is phase one. Um, so we're gonna, this is part of a much broader fee schedule, comprehensive and consolidated fee schedule update. So I'm gonna be getting from all the department heads. This is just building and planning and zoning. I will be getting over the from the other department heads over time, a consolidated schedule of fees that we will adopt. And that will be the one, you know, master document for fees that we'll go to to make changes or revise and, you know, just for ease of anybody looking to know what any fee or any charges from the town, then just go to that one place.
Are there gonna be questions? What do you need from us tonight, Cole?
Uh, a recommendation uh uh to approve the draft building fee schedule. And um with that, I'll I'll take this. We'll revise the Safeville contract and come back to you with a revised contract and a final um fee schedule for building and planning and zoning fees, and then you'll just adopt.
So not not to approve this schedule?
To uh you get to approve the draft. Um, yeah.
Do you have a more like motion?
Let's ask one quick question. As far as advertising these changes, so that people aren't blindsided, um, what it will Safeville handle that?
Yes, they they've notified us that they, just because we have everything in community core now, we have a a giant um, you know, email list. We're gonna be just doing a massive email blast that says, here's the new fee schedule. It's been changed because of House Bill four sixty one, you know, for valuation. You can anticipate these types of, you know, changes and we'll send this to them ahead of time.
Thank you.
Do we wanna maybe put a another dropdown thing in our 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 website showing all that, just?
Yeah, we'll we'll have something published.
Yeah, we can, that's, yeah, we can definitely do that.
What's it all for?
Will I make a motion that we uh move forward with the draft that you have presented to us?
So any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Are there any public comments? Here's nine. Staff comments?
Got one. Um, let's see, Aldo. Tucker Hungry's uh one year work anniversary coming up at the end of this week, so. Basically, so if you see him, uh wish him a happy anniversary on the one year. And uh he's a very hard worker, very lucky to have him, dedicated employee. So. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other staff comments? Council comments?
I have one. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, um put a flyer in front of you for the city prayer box. Um, this event was previously approved by council that was rained out on its original sched- scheduled date of March ninth. And I would like for you to um consider approving its rescheduled day upon Sunday, April thirteenth at three P M. And I've checked with Ms. Linda at Parks and Rec and that day is open and available.
Do you uh do we need a motion to approve this? Is there uh is there a motion to approve this particular event?
So. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And uh to that uh same topic, but a different date, the actual National Day of Prayer is May first. I got an invitation. You all may be asking one too, to uh noon at the fountain at the Fayette County complex. There is an event uh for that. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention since we're talking about. Um, any other, you want to comment more on? Okay. Any other council comments? Counselor, will you take us to executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I do have uh three items, two for real estate and one for threat litigation to cover an executive session.
Okay. Um. Is there a motion to move to executive?
So moved.
All in favor? Well, I gotta give second.
Second.
You have second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.